Wait till I tell you yourself pop up.
Okay, I'm waiting. Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Township Planning Board meeting of July 9th, 2020. Please note that this meeting will be conducted virtually. The public will be given an opportunity to participate remotely through Zoom by entering the link and entering the password seven lowercase v, uppercase V, lowercase j, seven lowercase j. Or, do we have a phone line open, too?
Yes.
Okay. And there seems to be lots of numbers here, so I'm assuming these are all good?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so I'm not going to read off all these numbers, but I will give the webinar ID number, which is 961-6549-3348, and the password 476043. Also, the application documents have been posted for inspection on the township's civic clerk portal, and it did occur at least 10 calendar days before the schedule of this evening's meeting. With that said, please join me in a salute to the flag. Oh, sorry, Nate.
Fled allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please be advised that this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2020 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the Township Clerk, post on the bulletin board here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex, and posted to the township's website. Additional notice has been provided to communicate that this meeting is being conducted according to the Governor's Executive Orders and pursuant to Public Law 2020-C-11, which allows for meetings to be conducted electronically. Okay, with that, may I have a roll call?
Let me, Mr. Chairman, Jim, can we check to see if Tina's online?
I'm going to see if she's there.
Can you check to see if Tina is on the call?
Yeah, I see Tina.
Tina, yes, Tina's on the line.
Can you turn off panelists?
Yep. Tina.
Yes.
Okay, this worked. All right. Roll call, please.
Okay. Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Peason?
Yeah, I'm remote.
He's absent?
No, 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 I'm going to let, ouch, everyone's jumping around too fast. Hold on, okay. Rob, you're on, okay. Rob, unmute yourself. Think I asked you to unmute?
You unmute everybody at once during the roll call?
I have to do this all one at a time, but everyone's...
Carl, if they're not on the dais, you may want to mute yourself so they...
Right, but I need to make sure. All right, let me...
Can you guys hear me? It's Neil Julian.
Yeah, but Rob, we didn't hear you if you were saying that you were present.
Eric, can you hear me?
Yep.
A piece in here.
You can continue. Yep. Tina, I think we've lost Tina. Did you promote her to panelists? No? Looks like, oh, wait. She's been promoted to panelists. Okay, Tina.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Santa Romita, you're there, right?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Ciccarelli?
All right, I got to get him off. He's online.
Jim, you got to unmute everyone that's a member.
Yeah, can you unmute everybody for me? Because what's happening is I have to allow them to talk, and then they jump, and then I have to ask them to unmute themselves.
So we're going to mute themselves until they're called.
All right, how are we doing? Okay, Tina.
Okay, Mr. Ciccarelli.
Ciccarelli's present.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Emmick?
Mr. Emmick, here.
Mr. Lepani?
Present.
Mr. Delcor?
Here.
Mr. Hashtag?
Here.
Mr. Julian?
I heard him before.
Yeah, I heard him, too.
Neil, you're muted. Here.
Here.
Okay, and Chairman Sirocky?
Here.
Thank you.
Yep. And I believe we do have, David Maskey is here in the room. Mr. Bernstein, where are you?
He's a panelist.
You're a panelist.
I'm here.
Excellent. Of course, we've got, Tina's here, Kaz is videoing, and Jim Hori is also here, manning or substation of sorts. So I believe that takes care of everybody here as part of the roll call. So next up is consideration of meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the June 25th, 2020 meeting minutes?
Scobbo will approve the minutes.
Ken Hashtag will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any comments from the dais? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicable members are Mr. Delcor, Mr. Peason, you, Mr. Julian, Mr. Scobbo, Mr. Hashtag, Mr. Ciccarelli, and Emmick.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Ciccarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Emmick?
Yes.
Mr. Delcor?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Neil, you're on mute. Do you need me to... All right. Neil, you're still on mute.
Yeah, he's going to have to unmute himself.
Yeah, he did. Go ahead, Neil.
Yeah, I'm here.
Is that a yes for approving the meeting minutes? Neil? Can you hear us, Neil? You look like you're unmuted, Neil.
Neil, it's an up...
Can we assume that's an abstain and move on?
Okay. Chairman Sirocky?
Yes. Okay, next up, we have consideration of a resolution. This is Hillsborough Industrial Park, file number 19-PB-24-S backslash MSPV. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Who's that?
John Lepani, so moved.
Scobbo, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Comments from the dais?
Yes.
Comments from the dais? Okay, hearing none. Go ahead, Eric.
The eligible members of the board are everybody except Mr. Wagner and Mr. Emmick.
Okay, thank you. Tina, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Santa Romita?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Ciccarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Lepani?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Neil's back.
Chairman Sirocky?
Yes. Okay. We do not have any planning board business, so next up will be business from the floor for matters not on the agenda. So if there's anybody on the Zoom meeting, you know, do the digital raise your hand if you'd like to comment on matters not on the agenda.
You unmute everybody. You unmute everybody now.
That's not here to mute themselves?
Well, that's the panelists right now. I do not see any hands raised, so we will move on. There are no consideration of ordinances, so next up, we have our application this evening from the County of Somerset below, file number 20-PB-06-SV. It's Block 169, Lot 55, commonly known as 506 Long Hill Road. The applicant is seeking a minor subdivision approval and C-Vareances to subsidize, subdivide approximately just over 60 acres into two lots. Proposed Lot 55.02 to contain approximately just over 34 and 1/2 acres with existing dwelling and improvements, and a proposed Lot 55.03 to contain just over 26 acres to be added to the county's open space inventory as part of the 6,000-acre Saralyn Mountain Preserve on property in the Emzieer Mountain Conservation District. So I believe we do, participating for the applicant is Frank Whittlesey and Thomas Bocino as the county principal planner. So with that, I will open it up to counsel. Mr. Whittlesey, I think I clicked for you to unmute. There you go.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Chairman, thank you for having us. My name is Frank Whittlesey. I'm appearing this evening on behalf of the county of Somerset along with our planner, Tom Bocino, for this...
Guys, I'm getting a lot of feedback.
Carl, you need to mute yourself?
Okay.
If he's coming in from the public.
Go ahead, Frank.
Okay. As you point out, Mr. Chairman, the county is looking to subdivide approximately 60 acres into two lots. One of those lots will be approximately 26 acres of undeveloped land with the intention that that property remain undeveloped in the future and become part of the Saralyn Mountain Preserve. That preserve is classified by the Somerset County Park Commission as an undeveloped natural area. It's defined as an area in its natural state with some identified aesthetic and special environmental qualities. And the long-range proposal for this subdivision and acquisition by the county is to allow for passive recreation uses such as hiking and bird watching. And as with most passive uses, there are no structural improvements at this time contemplated for the property, only informal nature trails which may or may not be developed in the future. We have with us Mr. Bocino, who's going to speak to the two bulk C-Vareances that the county is asking for from the board. And at this time, I'll turn that over to Mr. Bocino. We can have him, we'll also have him sworn. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Mr. Bocino?
Yes.
Mr. Zipperburn, can you raise? Testimony you're about to give is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got?
Yes, I do.
Can you indicate to the board, spell your name, spell your last name, and give their qualifications?
Certainly. Thomas Bocino, B as in boy, O-C-C-I-N-O. I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and I am also a licensed professional landscape architect in the state of New Jersey.
Okay, if there's no objections from anyone on the dais?
Nope.
See a lot of head shaking? No, so we will accept your credentials. You may proceed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Whittlesey gave the background on the property and the proposed uses.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bocino, guys, I have a lot of feedback again. Go ahead.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Great, great. Okay, so as Mr. Whittlesey said, I'll address, I will address the two bulk variance requests for the subdivision. The first bulk variance is for no frontage on an approved road. And as with past purchases with Somerset County, we have land within our inventory that is adjacent to this parcel, which does have frontage, so we would provide access to this property through previously preserved land. So that would give us access to Shorn Lane to the north, and a recent acquisition would now allow us access across county land to Long Hill Road on a recently acquired property that is just west of the subject property. So we do believe that there would be access across those parcels. The second variance is that the existing residence on proposed Lot 55.02 does not meet the front yard setback. We are not proposing any changes to that. It is a pre-existing use, non-conforming, and we are not proposing any changes to the property to remain with the seller. In addition, we are not proposing any uses or improvements on the parcel to be preserved by the county, so we don't see any intensification of use. Any questions?
None. One on the dais. See any, any of the planning board members online?
Any of the planning board members online. You can, hopefully you can unmute yourselves if you have any questions. If not, raise your virtual hand.
I'm good, no questions.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Bernstein, doesn't look like we have any questions or discussion points here. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Delcor.
Tom, hi, it's Frank Delcor. Could you just, for the benefit of so everyone's clear, some of the surrounding areas, how much of what is adjacent to this?
Guys, I lost you. Hello?
Hold on, Tina.
Carl is muted now.
No, I've been trying to mute myself.
You there, Tina?
Tina, you there?
Yeah, Mr. Delcor?
Yep.
You were saying, can you just, for the benefit so everyone is clear, some of the surrounding...
Okay. Can you hear me now, Tina? Tina, can you hear me?
Keep talking, Tina.
Yeah, guys, can you hear me?
Yes, yep. We can hear you. Can you hear us?
We couldn't hear you.
Can you hear us now?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I got cut off when Mr. Delcor was asking a question to clarify about the surrounding something.
So this is Frank. Can you hear me now, Tina?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So my question was if Mr. Bocino could give an idea of the surrounding properties that are adjacent to this. How much of that is part of the preserve already, or is this essentially a standalone preserve location?
Okay, I can clarify that certainly.
Feedback, feedback. Guys, I'm getting feedback from Mr. Bocini, Bocino.
Should I continue?
Yeah, go ahead. I didn't know why I was getting feedback. Go ahead.
Okay. So we have several lots actually that are adjacent to this property. We have a lot to the south, Lot 58, and we have several lots to the north. We have lots, we have Lot 59, Lot 36.05, 36.04, 36.03, and 37, and we also have the recently acquired Lot 38. Those all surround this property, and they are all part of the preserve. And actually, Lot 58 to the south was an isolated parcel up until this, up until this application came along. Now, this parcel that we're proposing to subdivide will connect that non-adjacent parcel to the rest of the preserve. Everything to the west is within Hunteren County. There is actually quite a bit of preserved land on the Hunteren County side, although that's been preserved by New Jersey Conservation Foundation and DNR Greenway Land Trust, as well as the county and the township.
Thank you. I was just hoping to get that on the record.
This is actually kind of one of the missing puzzle pieces in the assemblage of the preserve in this area. So there is direct access to the south, to the north, and about half of the property on the east side.
Thank you. I just wanted that on the record. Appreciate it.
I just wanted, I just want to check, Tina, did you just hear Frank's last comment?
Yeah, well, Mr. Bocini was just blocking.
Okay. See, Jim, you can't unmute me because she's not hearing anyone on the dais, so I got to stay. Okay. Nope.
I just said thank you for putting that on the record. That was Frank.
Got it.
Okay, anyone else? Any comments, clarifications, questions?
This is Sean. I just wanted to, for the record, that this purchase was also being funded 100% by county money and that the township was not asked to participate in any funds to buy this property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, another, one more bite at the apple? Okay, hearing no comments. If there's anyone, I guess I need to...
Motion, open to public.
Motion, open to public?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to open to public?
Yes, motion.
That's Frank, motion.
Ken Hashtag, second.
Okay, I have a motion.
Peason, second.
Too late.
I'm sorry, who made the motion and whose second is it?
Mr. Delcor made the motion. Mr. Hashtag did the second. Mr. Peason came in the distant third on that.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
There you go. If there's anybody on a Zoom meeting that would like to comment, please do a virtual raise your hand. I do not see any. So motion to close?
I'll make the motion to close. Scobbo, thank you.
Delcor, second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mr. Bernstein, what's our next action or options?
Your option, Mr. Chairman, is to approve or deny...
Mr. Bernstein, you have feedback.
I will mute myself now because he's on.
Your option, Mr. Chairman, is to approve or deny the application, which is File 20-PB-06SF, Block 169, Lot 55, 506 Long Hill Road, approving the applicant's application, seeking a minor subdivision approval and C-Vareances to subdivide approximately 60.654 acres into two lots. Proposed Lot 55.02 to contain approximately 34.583 acres with existing dwelling improvements, and proposed Lot 55.03 to contain 26.071 acres to be added to the county's open space inventory as part of the 6,000-acre Saralyn Mountain Preserve in the district.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Whittlesey, any final comments I forgot to ask you?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I think, I think you have all of the facts for you. There's not a lot here, and we appreciate your consideration.
Okay, thank you. So with that, do I have a motion to approve this application as per Mr. Bernstein's?
I'll make the motion. Santa Romita?
Okay, is there a second?
Scobbo, second.
Okay, Mr. Santa Romita, motion. Mr. Scobbo, second. Any final comments from the dais? Okay, seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Pe, Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Santa Romita?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Lepani?
Yes.
Mr. Delcor?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
And Chairman Sirocky?
Yes.
Okay. So with that, that ends applications for this evening. Just a reminder of our upcoming meeting agenda or schedule. We do seem to be holding for a solar facility application on July 23rd.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Tina, this is David. We will have an application from the county on the 23rd for a solar facility at the old Army, Bellmead Army Depot. This is, I should point out, this is not a site plan application by ordinance and by municipal land use law. The county is submitting their proposed solar project for comment, for review and comment only.
Okay, so they're just coming here for commentary?
Correct.
Okay, and currently we have no August meeting scheduled, so. And then that looks like that may take us into September, but we'll take a look at that on the 23rd. So with that, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Peason, so moved.
There you go.
Scobbo, second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Or is all in favor? I'm not doing roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Eyes have it. We are adjourned. We will see everybody in a couple minutes. Eyes have it, we are adjourned, we will see everybody in a couple of weeks on the 23rd. Good night, everybody, and stay safe.
Thank you.
8:05.